Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you, everyone, today on our Library Board of Trustees, City of Daly City meeting, November fifteenth, 2022, six o'clock. To attend in person, City Hall Council Chambers, third floor, City Hall, three-three-three Ninetieth Street, Daly City, nine-four-zero-one-five. To attend virtually via Zoom, Daly City, November fifteenth, Zoom. To watch the live telecast, Comcast Channel twenty-seven, or dalyacity.org agendas. Public participation, there are three ways to submit public comment. First, send written comments by four o'clock P M. on meeting day. Second, attend the meeting in person. And third, join to speak at the meeting via Zoom. To submit a comment in writing, please email libraryboard@dalyacity.org and write public comment in the subject line. In the body of the email include the item, number, and/or title of the item, as well as your comments. All comments received by four o'clock will be emailed to Library Board members prior to the meeting. Those comments received after four o'clock P M. will be added to the record and shared with the Library Board members. Following the public meeting, comments are not read aloud into the record. To speak at the meeting in person, please complete a speaker card located at the entrance to the council chambers and submit to a staff member as early in the meeting as possible. Third, when it's to speak in the meeting via Zoom, Zoom will require an email address and name. The name entered will be visible online. It will be used to notify you that it is your turn to speak. You may also join by sitting zoom.us/join. Enter meeting I D. eight-nine-six-six-nine-zero-nine-three-six-seven-nine. Then enter email address and name. The meeting may also be assessed via telephone by dialing, Local international numbers available on Zoom. Enter the meeting I D. eight-nine-six-six-nine-zero-nine-three-six-seven-nine. Then press bound. When would you like to speak on an item during the public comment portion of the meeting? You will need to use the raise hand feature in the Zoom. Public comment is limited to two minutes maximum, and speakers may only comment once per item. You must be familiarized yourself with Zoom prior to joining the meeting. The city will not be providing technical support. I think that it is okay. Thank you. That was a lot of information to read out. Now, we'd like to call this meeting to order at six-oh-three. Shall we stand and for the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you for that. Can we have roll call, please?
Trustee Santos.
Present.
Vice President Lex.
Present.
And President Pau Puah.
Present. And I believe trustee Angela is running a little bit late. She'll be joining us in a few minutes. Okay, can I have approval of the minutes of September? The meeting of September twentieth, twenty-twenty-two.
I motion.
Second.
Okay, motions carries. Okay. Public comment. Do we have any public comment?
We do not have anyone online or in the room comment.
Yay. Okay, Director's Report. I'd like to turn this time to Ms. Jayla.
Thank you everyone for your patience. Our system, but I want to introduce someone you know very well, know and love, Sarah Spence, our Youth Services Manager. She is going to present on this year's Summer Learning Challenge, which was a major undertaking, so I'm gonna just operate her slides.
Okay, so summer was over a while ago, but we haven't met. So I wanted to just give you a recap of how great it was this summer. So June first to August thirty-first, we had our Summer Learning Challenge. We had two reading logs, one for younger kids and one for teens and adults. So this year, our reading challenge was for all ages. They could either color in a circle or read five books and rate the books. So if they turned in their reading log, they got, for children for eighteen and under, they got a book. Well, they got a book for signing up. And then if they turned in their reading log, they got another book. And then they got a raffle ticket for a thousand-dollar scholarship. So this year was a little bit different than in past years because we do use Measure K funds with the other P L S libraries to get summer material. This year was our first year that we were able to decide how to spend that money instead of having the counties do everything for us, order the books and tell us how many scholarships. So this year, we were really lucky and we were able to give out four scholarships instead of one, which is what we've done in the past. And the other thing was I got to order all the books that we gave out. We didn't have anyone from the county doing that, so I feel pretty proud of that. So those were the new things that happened this year. So if you wanna move, thank you, Jayla. So this is just a breakdown. I did three years of our signups. You can see this year was awesome. So twenty-twenty, obviously, the pandemic was really hard to get people involved in summer learning. Twenty-twenty-one, we were able to do a little bit more outreach, but still not as much as this year. So this year, I feel like I went full force to all the schools. And we had more staff available this year. And we had a new manager at Bay Shore, a new manager at John Daly. And they were definitely helpful in doing outreach with me. So I was proud of that. And then this is just a little breakdown of our programs for the three years. So twenty-twenty, it looks like it was pretty good, but those were all virtual, and that's when everybody was working from home. So we had more staff available to put on virtual programs. Last year was still virtual, but we were back in the library pretty much. Yeah, so it wasn't as great. And then this year, we did all in person. And it was, I think it was one hundred and thirty-two programs. And that was June, July, and August. So that was, I was.
Question. On the previous slide, the numbers, was that the number of participants in the summer challenge? Or the number of signups?
Signups. Well, signups are participants, yeah.
Overall, in the county or Daly's?
Daly City.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
That's amazing.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, Jayla. So now, I'll just tell you, I'm breaking it down a little further. Our outreach programs, this was a great year for outreach. I went to all the schools. We had two Big Lift camps in Daly City this year that I I went to and provided summer reading logs and books. We had recreation camps through the Recreation Department at Westlake and at Bay Shore. So we partnered with Recreation a bunch this summer. We did outreach at our second home, at Kids Club, at the Ceremony Mall, Bay Shore Community Center, the opening, and Family Night Out. And I take books regularly to the Daly City Health Clinic. They participate in the Reach Out and Read program. So Daly City provides books for them to give to the children on their well visits. So I do that maybe every other month. I take books. They let me know when they're running low. And Jayla made a sticker that says, "From Daly City Public Library." So I put those on all the books. So that's all the outreach that we did this summer. Okay, in library programs, so these were the programs that we did four times a week. This year was great because we did one at every branch each week. So four programs a week at every location. So what I did this year was I had a certain number of crafts and programs, and then I just rotated. So it was actually helpful for people that couldn't come to certain days or times, they could see when we were having it at another location. So it worked out really well. So if you wanna go forward, I'll just tell you. We did a lot of great programs. We did rock painting. We made slime, watercolors. The DIY Chia Pets was like the favorite thing we've done in the world. You can make your own Chia Pet. And we made bird feeders, sun catchers, and pipe cleaner animals. So there is a wide variety of programs for all ages that were educational and STEAM, STEM, I think. So it was really fun this year. Okay. So we are also very lucky to get funding from D C P L A. Thank you. And our Thelma Dildrer grants that we also got. So we had a bunch of different performers that we were able to pay for this summer. So these are just some of the pictures, but if you can move forward, I'll tell you which we had. So we had Uncle Jairs, Traveling Bees, and I think Dr. Lexi went to that one. That was cool. They're from Elk Grove, and they came and talked about bees and the importance of bees, and they had hives. And they also provided samples of their honey. The Bay Area Discovery Museum came, which was also cool because they did, it's called Fairy Tale Engineering. And so one of their employees read The Three Little Pigs. And then the kids got to actually create houses, the Like Three Little Pigs houses, using all kinds of like just material, like tape and cardboard and straws and foil and just like a bunch of different stuff. So it was like very open-ended, but they got to create on their own something from the book. And then we had Magic Bubble Science. So he actually came twice. He came for a program where, like, basic chemistry was described to the kids in a fun way. But he also made giant bubbles for them and actually put them in the bubbles. So it was really fun. And then we had him at our end-of-year, end-of-summer party at Geller Park, which you'll see in a minute. We had Wild Mind Science Animals. So they're a rescue center in Half Moon Bay, and they provide just educational programs about different types of animals. We had the Bay Area Animals come to Bay Shore. That was actually a really good program at Bay Shore. We had it in the community center there. And I think we had about fifty people. It was a great turnout. We had Puppet Art Theater, which we've had before. He does a great puppet show. And then at the end, he shows the kids the different types of puppets and gives them like behind the scenes of the puppet stage and tells them how the puppets work and everything. So that was cool. And then NorCal Bats. So she brought real-life bats and talked to them about misconceptions about bats and that they're scary and, you know, that they really help. And so that was really fun, too. So we're very, very grateful for all of those performers that came and helped educate our youth. Okay. So another great thing is we had sixty-five storytimes. This is when we've, the first time we've been able to have storytimes at all locations in two years. And since all of our locations are open five days a week now, every location has one storytime a week. I do two because I do one for babies at Ceremony as well. But it was just, we were all like full force. Like, we started storytimes and our summer learning programs the same week. So it was just like, we just went full force. So it was really fun. Okay, thank you. Can we forward? And another program we brought back, Paused for Tales. We're so happy. That's at Westlake. That's Buddy. And we're very happy that the volunteer that owns Buddy and brings him, she was a Westlake library user. So she specifically asked to go to Westlake. And so we just started at Westlake. And then we're hoping that if the Peninsula Humane Society can get more volunteers, that we'll expand to our other locations because definitely Ceremony is interested, and Bay Shore and John Daly are also interested. So they just have to get more volunteers, and then we can expand our program. So, okay. So these are our scholarship winners. I'm glad that our meeting was delayed because I just got these pictures of the scholarship winners. So all four of them got a thousand-dollar scholarship for completing our summer reading program. So they're super excited. I gave them a bundle of books and a certificate as well. So that was fun. We got to have our summer learning party, so there's a little video. Yeah. So he put out like twelve stations in the grass that they could make giant bubbles with. They loved it. And it was a perfect day, like amazingly perfect day in Daly City. So we had, it was a great partnership day, too. We had, D C P L A was there, Recreation was there. They made cotton candy, snow cones, popcorn. And then the library had tables. We gave out books and made buttons. And then we had some STEM kits to give out as well. So it was just a very festive day. We had it for two hours going on, and everyone seemed to really love it. So I was very, very happy with this summer. I don't think we could have done anything better. So, any questions?
I was wondering about the signups. It looked like it was just below five thousand. And I was wondering how that compared to our pre-pandemic numbers.
Oh, that's a good question. I didn't look this year. I could look it up and see, but.
I'm just wondering if it got back up to the level we were at before?
I think it, I think it, it seems like it was pretty close. But I'll have to double-check that for you.
To my recollection, it's comparable, but, you know, we can double-check.
Yeah.
And Sarah, about of those almost five thousand, do you know how many actually completed their summer learning goals or requirements?
Yeah, that number was a lot less. I think it was close, maybe close to six hundred. It's not as many because when we do signups, signups count for us going to all the schools and giving out the reading logs. That's a sign up, so it's not necessarily that they're gonna finish it. But it's, you know, making sure that we're promoting it and everything, but.
And providing the book.
And providing a book for them, yeah. They get books and reading logs. So that's something that I definitely would like to figure out how to increase. And I was hoping that by increasing the number of scholarships, that more people would be interested in participating. We also did some raffles at the end of the summer for movie passes. And people really liked that. We had a pass for the Curiosity Museum. And I think, what was the other one? Samatero, a park pass, yeah, the Samatero County Park Pass. So we did those, and people really like those to do raffles. So we were thinking like maybe increasing that, trying to increase that next year. Just trying to think of new ways to get people interested in it.
One other question. In terms of the paid performers, do you schedule that ahead so that we know when and where the paid performers are going to be during the whole program?
Yeah, I did. This year, it was, I probably waited a little bit longer than I should have because it's just me doing it. So, but I think, I mean, we did have a schedule like of all of our programs. I think the Summer Learning Party, and there's maybe one other one that was kind of like at the end. And so it wasn't with the rest of the programs, but we did like promote it as soon as we got. It's just, it takes time to coordinate with the people and schedule and do the W-nines and the confirmation and the contracts and all that. So it just, I mean, it was great having so many, but it's just a lot of back and forth, back and forth. So I think I'll try to do it. I mean, I always say that. I always say I'll try to do it.
Aspirational, right?
Yeah, I always have goals.
But Sarah, each year Sarah makes, you know, a guide that we hang up in the library and that she's able to bring to outreach that lists all of the different programs and kind of highlights the ones, you know, where we have a special guest.
Yeah. And I just started, this year, I started a spreadsheet of putting what performers we've had. So we know, you know, just, because there are some that we like to rotate, but maybe not every year we have them. So it's just something for staff to see and me to see, so.
Well, the reason I was asking, and maybe this information was actually shared, you know, through one of our Zoom meetings, but I was wondering if something could be sent out to the trustees and the schedule could be sent out so that if we have the time and the interest, we would know where to go to attend a program.
Yeah, that's a good idea. I will try. I will try.
Yeah. Well, clearly, you put in a lot of work, and it's great to see the numbers are, you know, the signups are coming back up.
Yeah, I was really happy with that. Thank you.
Yeah, great work. I think, yeah, it's been also really beautiful to see the programs grow as the availability of the libraries are growing. I'm also, I guess I'm just curious, like, do you have a sense of if some of those, participation in summer program has translated to like library membership? Or if you're seeing more patrons signing up for library cards with us as they attend?
I don't know about library cards. I know, like, definitely my storytimes are growing. I'm getting between twenty and forty people at my storytimes. And when the first week, I had maybe five. And so it's like definitely growing. I don't know about library cards.
I can bring that information back to you. I don't know that it specifically like goes in spurts with programs necessarily. But definitely, you know, we have a consistent enrollment of new patrons.
Yeah, yeah, I was just curious if there is a trend and that would love to continue highlighting the work that you all, you know, you all are doing for that.
Thank you, Sarah. Sarah. I just love your slides. I love the presentation. It's very colorful and well-prepared. And that's to show the work you put in. You know, it reflects to the work that you put in. I much appreciate it. And then when you were saying, "It's just me," I appreciate it. That brings me that I will make that as another topic to talk about as one of our ongoing building, to talk about it. So I appreciate. I did saw the fun that was, you know, at the end of the year, the party, at the park, you know, children. I saw the bubble guy with the big old bubbles. And it was just a beautiful day because that whole week, but that day was perfect for the activity. And a lot of participation, the parking was full. So I salute and thank all the staff and whoever that were involved in putting that activity together for our families and for our communities.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Looks like you had a very fun, well organized and thought-out summer, Sarah. Is there anything that we can do to help you as trustees? Or anything that we could support you with? Because it's a lot, yeah, and really good outcomes.
Well, I mean, I did, I had one person that was, she worked reference a few, I don't know how many hours, a few hours a week. And then the rest of the time, she helped me. So she did help me like go to the places. But I mean, that's like the biggest challenge for me is like schlepping everything back and forth. Because I feel like this year, it was like we did organize it and to, we put everything in bins so that when we were taking it to the library, the next library, I was all ready to go and everything. So that's like the biggest thing that I just, I usually need help with is like helping going to places. And then like going to all the schools and taking all the books and everything. That's just, and it's such a like close timeframe because they all get out of school and I, we get the books, and there's like not much time. And then I have to, you know, schedule fifteen or nineteen schools or whatever. So it's just a lot. But I did wanna say thank you so much for the school supplies that you provided. I didn't, I didn't let you know, but we actually gave them out at the Bay Shore Block Party. So they all, everything you gave us like went to Bay Shore School, like families and teachers and like, it was great. Like, they're so appreciative.
I'll let the teammates know, yeah, because those are all from teammates. Those are all from tellers, from bankers. You know, they just added some extra supplies to their shopping cart, buying for their own kids or those that didn't have any. My gosh, this guy, this one guy, he was like, "I just bought like fifty crayons," or whatever. I was like, "Yeah, that's fine. Thank you."
They couldn't believe it. They were just like, "These are free? What? Free?" Yeah, yeah.
We're happy to do that.
Thank you very much for that.
If anything comes up, because I actually listed some of the programs that you did, the rock painting, the pipe wire, the bird feeders, anything like that, Sarah, just let me know, and then maybe I can try to do something geared towards the specific projects.
Oh, great. Okay. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, this year, we did, we did have like staff at each location. I mentioned before summer started that I would need help if I, because I went to every program to do the program. So I said, "You need to have at least one staff person to help me." So they did. Everybody did. So that was nice. So. So that's the main thing is just like, act, you know, extra help with that kind of stuff, so, but thank you.
Yeah, that's the thing with the library program, there's not, you know, a list of registrants. It's, you don't know. It always feels like no one's gonna come and then, oh, there's too many people.
And this year I feel like it was like so great because people hadn't been out for two years. And so they were just like flooding us, like every program was like busy because they were like, yes, we can do something with our kids. So it was great.
Just one suggestion, would you be able, or if it's possible, to post this presentation on our website? I think it's, what is it called? It's part of statistical, you know, like this is a way for patrons, you know, for them to view are, you know, what you have done and what we're doing in summertime. So I, I feel like we should, this is a great presentation.
Thank you.
To put it up on our website, you know, because they don't know what we're doing, you know? But then it summarizes the whole summer, you know, what you have been doing.
Yeah, like a social media celebration. And then I, I also, I'm super excited to see how the, the kind of like co-building of summer programming has been working with Park and Rec. Is that like an area that you're looking for, like you're hoping to continue growing and deepening?
Oh, yeah.
Cause I know there's been some also emerging conversations, even with some of the commissioners of like, can there be like a joint meeting in the future or some share? I know we've talked about that.
Yeah, it's, I think we really started it during the pandemic when I started the rec and reading with, with them. And then, but now I feel like other staff, like from John Daly and Bay Shore, they were helping go to locations and like they were getting a summer camp, dropping camp at Bay Shore. So Christine was working with them. And so it's just, like, we just have a really good time with them and so I, I love working with them.
I mean, it makes sense. The facilities are literally connected.
And then we just like have fun together, so.
That was the vision when, when they were built, definitely was for John Daly and Bay Shore. It's, you know, it's a multi-use facility.
And I guess on that note, I know that our rec programs have other seasonal kind of times that they do programming? Like, are you, have you all thought about maybe doing some winter holiday, like while students are on break during winter holiday or?
So I actually just was speaking with Christine about that and I know she's planning some sort of a, doing a cooperative event for that. And then I understand also that two of the staff, two of the library staff will be in attendance at the, at the Frosty Fest. You know, how big Frosty Fest is.
Frosty Fest. We should have an ice rink here in Daly City.
Props to that partnership.
It feels like it today.
It feels a bit like there's so many possibilities, so definitely continue with that.
Thank you again. Thank you so much. Okay, prefer names?
Oh, yeah, so this is not a major initiative or anything like that. It's, I would say one of those super basic things that an organization can, can do to, to be respectful of, of, of our patrons. But I, I just wanted to, to highlight it and call it out for you guys just because, you know, otherwise you, you may not know about it. And it's something that really reflects our efforts to continue to adapt, to make sure that our services, our policies and our procedures really reflect our values in terms of inclusion and, and equity. And so this is actually, this is a, we share an, what we call an ILS. It's our library services platform, which is a computer system that has, that has our database of users as well as our database of items. And so this is, this is something that's peninsula-wide. And so this is, this is a project that all of the peninsula libraries are cooperating to do. And it's a, a small thing where we have, we're going to add a field for a preferred name. We're actually gonna add a field for your legal name and the regular field is gonna be your preferred name. And, and so it's, it's not, not like I said, a major thing, but it actually will, we had to work with the company that makes our, our library services platform to make a change. You know, they had to go into the backend and make that change and there's a cost associated with that. And then there's a timeline for implementing it and training staff and all that. So like I said, I just, I wanted to, to let you know about it, cause I think it's a really positive change. And, and I, I'm glad that we've made this change and, and we'll continue to look for other ways that we can, we can do better and better.
I love it. I love it. I, I, I do just wanna continue to give you all and the staff props for, I think you all have been taking a lot of really bold and creative steps towards inclusion. And particularly in the way that I think you're taking reaction steps to make people feel seen. And I think the preferred name feels like a minor thing, but I think it's gonna mean a lot, especially for a lot of young people who often don't feel seen by these kinds of systems, to be able to just like declare who they are. So I appreciate it, Taylor, for the thing.
Yeah, I've had those, those interactions with people where, you know, it's not, not what they would want to put on their record. And so it's nice to be able to offer that and, yeah. It's good. And just a, a kind of, to recognize just the library community in general, obviously the peninsula libraries. But I think just even nationwide, libraries have really, you know, taken this work to heart. And we had, you know, Sarah leading the, the CRE team and.
I guess quick question, since it's like an update to the system. If somebody, for say, I'm totally like, I don't know how this text of works, but if somebody has already been in the system and with the added field, would it then update their information automatically or?
So it's, they would, they would have their, only their legal name in there right now and it would be in the main field, which will become their preferred name. And so they will need, they would need to let us know.
Oh, okay.
And then we would, we would make that change.
Okay.
And then, you know, there's all the details of making sure that, that that's in fact the field that's gonna show up on notices. And if they get an email about a hold, you know, all those, all those details.
Would this be considered, Dr. Lex, I don't know if you guys, um, do we need to have somebody to look into it? Like the literature of it, how is it going to be communicated out to the patrons? You know, the legalities of it?
I think that because this is gonna be peninsula-wide, that, that definitely that's something that we'll be looking at, how to, how to communicate that with, with our users. So as you said, somebody who already has a record may not know that they have this option. And it really affects a lot of people. I know like in some families, like the son has the same name as the father, who has the same name as the grand, and they, but they, you know, choose to go by, you know, a nickname or something like that. And so there's just lots of reasons why somebody might wanna be called something other than, you know, what's on their driver's license. So we'll definitely, that, yeah. Yes, definitely something that, that we'll need to work on. Once, once it's been fully implemented, we'll need to work on communicating it.
Are other cities trying to?
Yeah, all, all of the peninsula libraries will.
Can we kind of get some information from them? How do they go about it? Do they need any legal to be involved?
Oh, um, it, because we'll continue to have a field for their legal name. So, so it should, it shouldn't have any implications that, that way.
Do we need to vote on it?
No, no, no.
But I love it. I like it. It's, you know, it's the week, this week, it's the week of United Against Hate Week, you know? And, and you really brought up one good aspect of it, you know, you know, like, just like the pronouns. You know, and so, and Daly City is very diverse, very diverse. But, you know, we, we start that example, so thank you. Anybody else have any? Okay, moving along, trustees report. Thank you, Taylor.
Thank you.
Subcommittee report, P. Prochet.
Uh, yes. The project kind of fell into a slump for a while. I was having trouble connecting with our Bay Area Regional Coordinator from Albiol. As it turns out, she's moved on to better things, one hopes. And recently I was able to make contact with her replacement. He's been on the job for about a month, so he's learning quickly. I'm really glad that I was able to speak with him because I guess there was a lack of communication about, you know, our interest in the project. So he's hopefully now up to speed and we're gonna make sure that he and his lead beekeeper in the Bay Area and a person in Montreal from the home office are helping us to develop the project. I also talked to him about the timing of establishing a hive. And he indicated that winter is a dormant period. And if you try and establish a hive at this point in time, they're less likely to be successful. And that spring, as you might expect, you know, is a great time. So I'm not sure that, and I'll talk about funding in a second, that we're going to have all of the different pieces put together in order to make this happen in early spring. But I'll keep that in mind and, you know, try and move it ahead as quickly as possible. So that brings me to, you know, the real issue, because all of the other pieces seem to be working, and that's funding. I'm going to be contacting, and in fact, I've already made the contacts, but I haven't gotten responses from some likely funding organizations here in Daly City. I am, well, I appreciate that DCPLA asked their grant writer to write a proposal to help fund our project, which was done. Unfortunately, it was turned down, which was not a great surprise. But DCPLA was, you know, in there and giving us support. I did speak to Victoria today. She assures me that, you know, they're, she and the organization are interested in the project, you know, as co-conspirators and people who deserve credit if this, well, when it comes to fruition. Angela, you came to mind also because you've been so, you know, generous in terms of trying to make Bank of America resources available. And I don't know if there's anything that you can do or explore within the B of A network. But if you can, this would be a good time to start doing that. And who'll be, I'm not sure what kind of funding cycle B of A is on for this sort of thing. But if they're on a calendar year, you know, coming up to January and February. And hopefully, you know, if we qualify for something, the timing will be right.
Yeah, I had an opportunity to, to meet with the market president and, you know, let her know all the great things that we're doing in Daly City. So at least I have a face-to-face. She's basically the decision maker for all the funding for Bay Area and Central California. So, yeah, I think what we should probably do is get the grant over to me and then I can send, send the grant on our behalf before January. So basically all the resources are done for the year for 2022. Now we wanna look forward to 2023. I do have a question about the project. You know, I'm newly like understanding this.
Sure.
So if we, if we are able to set up the B project in the spring, that's ideal to, for it to be successful and for, I don't know, I guess that we have to be like acclimated for like the whole year? Like they'll sustain like winter and all of that from your knowledge?
Well, part of the service that Albiol provides is not only to establish a hive on a particular site, but they also monitor the hive on a regular basis in terms of the bee's health and vitality and their, their, you know, diet and how they're producing honey and honeycomb and, you know, that whole business. And they're very attuned to the signs of a successful hive versus one that's struggling. So, and I'm not sure I'm answering your question.
So it's maybe like a two-part question and maybe part of it is me kind of really understanding what I'm asking as well. But does, do we have the climate to, for a beehive to sustain the whole year through? Because, you know, just me, even just as a patron, would I be concerned of, of, is us investing? And then, you know, during certain times of the year, something may happen where, you know, the beehive just was not successful and, you know?
Yeah, that's a very good question.
That'd be heartbreaking, right?
Well, it would be unfortunate.
Yes.
But again, part of the service that Albiol provides is replacement bees or hives, should the colony totally collapse?
Okay.
We don't want that to happen. And they'll do everything to see that it doesn't happen. But, you know, we're, we're an okay environment in terms of the, the whole twelve-month cycle. It's just there are times when bees will thrive in terms of being able to go out and find newly flowering nectar or pollen-bearing plants versus, you know, when it's winter and, you know, it's, it's harder, it's more of a struggle. And bees, you know, have quite a range in terms of where they go and, and gather pollen and bring it back to the hive. So, you know, like I say, if, if something were to happen that was catastrophic, Albiol would come in and replace that hive with a fresh one.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Lex, can you reiterate again, what's the amount that we would have to raise for the project?
The last time I looked, and I say that because we know what's happening with persons.
Your best guess.
Is that to establish a single hive would be in the neighborhood of $6,000 plus the $2,000 that we would have to pay for what I'll call infrastructure improvements at the Bay Shore Library. If we were to add a second hive, that would increase the cost by about $2,000. So think of eight.
So like ten thousand, ten?
That's even recommended because two hives sort of work better than one. I think there's some synergy that may exist. But, you know, when I look for funding, I'm going to be suggesting that we do it at the two hive level. And, you know, if we have to start with a single hive, then that's fine. That's what we'll do, but.
So we're looking at about 10,000, about 10 to 12,000.
Right, yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Dr. Lex, did the bee, Albiol, did they per, present you with a proposal, a actual document, a proposal? So that way we can present it to the city? Or did we actually turn down from the city that this is out of their reach, that we're supposed to fund it ourselves?
So we have a, a budget for the year and, and this isn't, isn't, isn't in it? So there isn't currently funding for it from, from the, the library's budget at this time, so.
Yeah, I was assuming that we would have to do this on our own and that we would not have to go to the city for funding. Yeah, I wouldn't frankly expect to be successful with that kind of request. So I'm, you know, I, I hope we don't get to that point.
So are we, are you agreeing to have Ms. Angela take over writing a secret, you know, to propose a grant?
So if I'm advocating for the grant, I can write the grant?
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So can we use the same grant that was written by DCPLA, the same literature?
That's a good question. And Angela, maybe you could speak with Victoria and see if there's something that we can do to.
Since it's already in place.
Because I don't think we have, you know, grant writing, well, I don't know, we may have some grant writing expertise up here.
I'm good at writing journals.
We can create like a template, but one more question. How much is it to sustain a year? 10,000 with the two hives is the, is the fee to set it up? And then thereafter, do we have?
It's a twelve-year, or excuse me, a twelve-month agreement.
Oh, I see, okay.
So it's established and maintained.
And then the next year, we would have to come up with another 10 grand or, or, you know?
A lesser amount.
More so.
No infrastructure, so that's 2,000 off the top. No infrastructure, so that's 2,000 off the top. There is an installation charge when you first establish a hive that I want to say is around $400 that doesn't repeat, you know, unless you're changing locations. But I would assume that the majority of the cost would carry forward.
Can we also attach to city, you know, when they went there and do their own estimations of how it's going to be, can we attach that to the grant?
Well, I'm attaching it, yes, we, we could, I think.
And I really, I'm, I'm really sorry, Dr. Lex. I know in the beginning, when you came on board, this was your baby, that you wanted this. But sometimes I feel like too, that's the timing, you know? And hopefully, this guy that is on, back in the business, that will help to put things in. And with the expertise of Ms. Angela, hopefully, some things we'll see happening very soon.
Well, I'm not relying on Angela to work miracles.
No, no, that's not what I mean, but to help, to help, yeah. But we can also find out ways how to fund it.
But, you know, it is, it is a numbers game, right? So you reach out to Bank of America, then maybe you also reach out to Wells Fargo or wherever. Bigger companies have a presence within the city. That would be your audience for the grants. So, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll send it, I'll send it to Bank of America. But maybe we can also send it, you know, get our connects to, you know, wherever local business is and send it as well.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No, Dr. Lex, I guess you'll be working with Ms. Angela and to kind of put her in the run, or not in the run, don't run, but just to, you know, into D S R M O, into the bee project. But thank you, thank you so much. Okay, subcommittee report, meeting room policy.
Well, I want to thank Justin for volunteering to help me with this. So go ahead, why don't you lead off?
Yes, so Dr. Lex and I did some work on revisiting the community room, the public use of the library community meeting space, which has been some time. And I think just thinking about, does everything still align with what we are, how, how things have changed and what we're currently envisioning for the use of this particular space? And I will say, for the most part, it seemed like things looked still pretty aligned with the, with the, with the exception of just, I think, I think some additional thinking on how we were prioritizing the use of the space. And I think just particularly, I, I had some questions around like, you know, do we also want to think about some school-based activities for the community rooms in the space? For that particular room, like teachers holding events or some student-led activities by clubs or other groups? And then I don't know, Dr. Lex, if you wanted to add some of what you were thinking too?
Sure. What I've really done with this draft is just included the other three branches in addition to the Ceramati branch and its community meeting room. And, you know, I've changed, for example, in the current policy, the phrase "community meeting room space" to "library community meeting room space." That's not quite right. Where it was a singular policy before, now it's open to the other three, or excuse me, the other three branches. In the first paragraph, you can see that all four branches are listed, even though it's possible that there is not any space that's suitable at those branches. This is really an exploration. When Ten and I were talking, we were thinking that perhaps a space assessment could be made at each of the other branches, perhaps even at Ceramati, in terms of places that are potentially suitable to fall under this policy and to expand it beyond the one room, you know, downstairs at Ceramati branch. There are no substantive changes. Probably the only one that might be considered a change would be under two rules for public use, item C. I have added to the end, it's all meeting activities must be open to the public. And then I've added, unless otherwise approved. So that's a change to consider. But otherwise, it's really just including the other branches as potential spots. One thing I did leave out accidentally under three amenities was the Ceramati branch equipment that's available. There are folding tables that are listed in the current procedure policy. And somehow those, you know, didn't make it into the draft, but they should be there.
And shout out Dr. Lex for taking the time to redraft that policy.
So I wanted to say that Bay Shore branch, totally there's no extra room, but the office that belongs to the staff is just two sides, which is the children. And then the other one where the computers. And it's just open to, with books and tables. So do we still want to mention Bay Shore over here?
Well, I would work with the library staff, you know, and ask them to give us recommendations. You know, take a look at the various sites and say, yes, there is a possibility, you know, at John Daly or at Westlake, but not at Bay Shore, for example. And, you know, if anyone has knowledge of a branch and thinks that there is a space that could be used for something like this, then, you know, that can be presented and considered.
So there are, there, there are study rooms at Westlake and John Daly, but they, and they are currently in use by individuals as it's a silent study space. So any changing spaces into reservable spaces would, would then potentially displace those users? So I don't know. The other thing is, most of those spaces also get used periodically for library programs. I will say, even though we don't have a system in place to reserve them, I know from the past that we have made an exception. For instance, a student who had been expelled and needed to meet with a counselor regularly, you know, we've made a space for them. Or, or somebody who needed to meet with, you know, a pro bono immigration attorney. Or, you know, there's different, different situations where somebody needed a space and it, and it was appropriate to have, you know, to, to make a, a library space available for that. But most of the time, it's, it's not reserved. It's just in use for individuals looking to kind of escape the main, you know, slate hum of the big open room. So we can certainly, I think probably being on-site would be the most productive way to, to reexamine the spaces. We could make a time to do that.
Okay. Well, I mean, those are two good examples of space to consider. And while they're open now, I'll just say to miss, to unscheduled use, it might be good to make them available to other groups in the community, just like you've stated. And make it part of the policy rather than sort of an ad hoc thing that's done informally.
Well, I'm going to go with 15, 12 years ago, maybe, a while ago. Actually, both of those, the, the little study rooms were, were made available for study groups to reserve. But what we observed is something that I think happens at a lot of libraries with study spaces is that separately, independently, two professional tutors kind of made their home there. And then they would book it, you know, sequentially under the names of their clients. And so they kind of monopolize the space, which, you know, I mean, I know, you know, if somebody's using it, that's to the good. But at the same time, when, you know, we're responsible for ensuring equal access to community resources. You know, having one person monopolize the space did turn out to be an issue.
You know, that may be covered by the current policy where it talks about, you know, non-commercial activities, I think, being excluded, or excuse me, commercial activities being excluded. It seems to me there's something in here. I can't pull it out right now, but, you know, that would cover that should that kind of problem arise in the future.
And, you know, policies are, you know, they're there for every individual or every group of people, individuals to read. However, there's always some people, and I would say some people that like to, to go around and manipulate it, you know, and make it their own way of how to move things around. I appreciate Dr. Lex and Justine for working on this. And maybe do we need to look at it again one more time for the wording? Or are we, are we set for, for the policy?
Well, I was hearing there was an interest in a space.
Yeah.
Well, we need to do a little more work because on the third page, you'll notice that the Westlake, John Daly, and Bay Shore branch say TBD or to be determined. We don't know if there's going to be space there or not. And if so, what kind of amenities would be available to support community use?
Yeah.
So instead, and this is just my suggestion, instead of naming down all the libraries, we'll just put down library sites when available. And that will be up to the staff to, to consider ahead of time the spaces that are available and that are not occupied by patrons. Because if we, if we do all the libraries here, then we need to break down what are the availability items that are there to accommodate to the patrons?
And this is also within a subcommittee. I don't know if, I'm sure we'll, we'll figure out a time, Dr. Lex. But if you're down, maybe as a subcommittee, we can take this back and do some assessment and maybe connect with Uchela on a time to. I think maybe given Teresa, what you're lifting already about Bay Shore, and I know you, you know that branch very well, that we could focus on the two others for now and report back.
Bay Shore is very small.
Yeah, yeah. We can focus on the two for now.
I mean, you could get one of those, what the tech, the tech companies have, those little booths.
Yes, and then add it to the agenda for the next. And we can let you all know if we made time to do those assessments or if we have to.
But maybe the amenities, maybe we can add into that policy and just get it an approval from the city. Since now we got that building back at the community center and it solely belonged to the city, then we can utilize some of that room.
There's like a reference to.
For any, 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 anybody to want to use it for that cause.
I see what you're saying, Teresa.
Just chiming in too, what did you all have in mind for these like meeting rooms? Like what types of groups would need this room exclusively?
So in the policy, there's a breakdown of groups, you know, nothing about, gosh, I just read that today.
Well, the priorities of use talk about.
For meetings, for the community, nonprofit, you know, if, you know.
We have book clubs.
You have book clubs.
We, we.
A tea party?
Not social events. We also have had the Smart, Smart, Smart Start workshops for, for small businesses. And we had a workshop series in partnership with Renaissance on, on using Squarespace. And then there's actually a, an individual doing some sort of a program, recurring program on, on financial literacy that's not affiliated with us, so.
Right, I was thinking of tax assistance and things like that.
Nothing about religion, any religious matter? Anything that, yeah, anything about against, you know, like hate or, you know, any politic, political, yeah.
Well, that's not addressed by the current policy and it wouldn't be addressed.
No, 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 she, you know, those are some of the things we can't.
And it's some examples of some groups that would need to use the meeting room. And then you all are proposing on a book-by-appointment basis, right? Because.
Hi.
Hi.
I was told that you guys need something?
Oh, it's okay, we're, we're good for the evening.
Thank you, thanks for checking.
Thank you, you can bring coffee.
Three pizzas.
Thank you, oh, that was sweet of him.
He has the key we need. So staff would definitely need, you know, guidelines and a, and a policy and a, and a procedure, in fact, for, for doing any kind of booking. We'd need to know what the times of availability are and, and.
What the usage is for and, yeah. They'd have to fill out like a form, maybe like online or in person and then get it approved.
The reservations are covered here.
Reservations, okay. But this, the, the folks who are studying in those quiet spaces, they can just walk in and.
Yeah, it's, it's just a room where you're not supposed to talk.
And if not being used for something else, some scheduled activity, it would be available for, you know, anyone to use as they would see fit.
Yeah, because I would be curious if we can explore, like, there are specific times in the day where you can book it as a community room, whereas like the rest of the hours can be open or something. Not that it has to look like that, but I think those are some ideas we can explore also.
Chela, would you provide, Dr. Lex and Justine, maybe a list of patrons that have recently reserved those rooms and the purpose of? So maybe they kind of know and, and how many participations were there? What was it about? Or maybe hand them the copies of reservations? Do you, you guys keep those?
We, it's online.
Oh, online, so how would they get hold of it?
I, I can provide a list of people who've used it.
They kind of have a picture of what.
Yes, I would say that the community room is pretty distinct, though, from any of our other spaces. I mean, it's just, has a much larger capacity and it's, it's really set up for events and meetings. Whereas the other rooms, there, there's very, it's a very small capacity. And, and they're just for studying, really, there's, there's no, I mean, there's outlets and chairs and tables. Those are the amenities.
Do we do like a, a survey, like the end of a fiscal year from the, from that to see what the patrons, you know, that, they didn't have a board? There was no whiteboard? They said that the wifi was working, but it wasn't working? You know, something like that to get their input of why we have the space, you know? Would that, those patrons come back? Or would they consider looking somewhere else for?
I think the price is right with it. So they, they, I've, I've not received any negative comments about this space. I will say, I, personally, I'm not happy that it's, it's not as accessible as it should be. And I, I do expect that that will change. I'm very excited about that. But the room will actually be probably inaccessible for a pretty extended period of time during construction sometime in the next year or so.
Okay, well, thank you so much. So, Dr. Lex and Justine, you will report back.
That sounds good as a next step to you, Dr. Lex.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Community, community engagement, library events, visits. So who wants to go first?
No update from me.
Okay. I was not at the library, but I was able to see the ladies working at, you know, Sarah, I swear you're everywhere. You know, at every event, Sarah is holding a book. And what a way to promote literacy, you know, to keep pushing and putting the picture out there. You know, the preschool children are like, I saw the library lady. I saw the lady with the books. So I haven't visited any, but I've been to events and see how the staff work diligently and always over there to represent and even to do what they're there to do. So, thank you.
Yeah, I want to second that really quick before I move that. I did get feed, I didn't get to visit, but I did get feedback. One, that Sarah is so fun by the students, by the young people. And two, I think a lot of excitement that it was storytime was available at multiple branches. And I've heard that from multiple. And I've heard that from multiple patrons, so just to affirm. I know it's it's a lot, but just to affirm that is good. It's working really well.
It's literally my favorite thing, like, is working with kids. I've had so many people ask me if I'm a teacher on the side or like, do you do daycare? I love my job.
Yeah, and it totally matters, I think, that they have storytime in different places because some people find them, yeah.
Uh, I was in the Westlake branch a number of months ago when we had a previous rain. And when I walked in, I noticed in the back section there were lots of bins and plastic sort of funnels trying to collect water coming through the ceiling. And I was just wondering if that problem's been remedied or are we still experiencing it?
It is an ongoing issue.
Recent rains, so.
It's an ongoing issue.
Okay, so we're still working on it.
In the library?
The, there are issues. The the roof was redone and and there are issues with with the way that was completed or not.
But it's been, right? It's it's it's, uh, it's been a problem?
Yeah, well, they were definitely due. It's just unfortunately it went a little awry. So it's 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 an active project and and, you know, public works is diligently working towards a resolution. It's just can't come soon enough.
Yeah, I'm sure. Yeah, it's kind of a little mess back there.
I I soar for you all.
There's actually a number of roof projects coming up, so hopefully most of our leaks will get taken care of.
Oh, I haven't had an opportunity to visit, but when I did visit, when I dropped off the school supplies, I was really happy with what I saw. I was so happy to see that, you know, with all the bouncing babies and everything was is back in place post pandemic. I love the little artwork in the teen section. I saw some of my, I saw my boss like taking pictures and saying, this is so cool. I think she lives in Richmond and she was like, I wish, you know, my library had, you know, was as lively as this location. I have had an opportunity to talk to a couple of customers, so customers slash mutual patrons of the library, and they know you all. And I'm like, I know them too. And they love you all. And they say, you know, I I go to the library, I use it as a resource. They go to the library, then I go, they do their banking, then they go to Sprouts. This is like, and so just great work, you know. I'm happy that we're back in person. No little squares, no, I'm not at home with my dog barking in the background, but no, but, you know, more more to come, you know, more great things to come. I know that this is a start of like consistent visits for us and just, you know, jumping off where we left off. So good work.
Okay, port vacancy. What can we say?
At our last meeting, I thought we, one of us was going to contact a council member and I can't remember who it was.
Was it me?
The council member, was it you, Teresa?
I don't know.
It may have been.
Which, which council member has the vacancy?
Well, that's what we asked last time.
Here's the thing. There, we were all appointed by a council member.
Right.
Had we?
I think it was Vice Mayor.
Is it Sylvester that has the vacancy?
So.
Okay.
I've I've already have the council, the council member that has not had their turn, that's the one that's supposed to to fill up the vacancy.
Yeah, because I'm like.
But I I think what I hear what you're saying is that we were, I was supposed to go to the there was a lot going on in the council.
A clear recollection of that.
I don't, I don't actually remember.
Yeah, I don't remember too, unless I'm way too old.
So we can make a decision now. Is that on the notes?
Was it me? Was it me? It was me. Oh, I did. Oh, no, I did not.
It was a note. It was a next step.
No, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will try to reach out to Mayor Rod sometime this week. I know that the voting thing just passed and everybody's trying to recollect themselves from that race. But I will approach them before next board meeting.
Okay.
Okay, but thank you.
In the minutes.
Somebody will put it down. I, that's great. Okay, uh, report from the D C P L A. We are fortunate to have.
Good evening, President Fopawa and the entire Board of Trustees. Thanks for having me this evening. So nice to see everybody in person.
Yes.
Been a long time. D C P L A has been busy this last quarter of the year, and we're just excited to share what we've been up to with you all. First off, I wanted to talk about an event we had on November fifth. It was the D C P L A hosted our inaugural Art and Lit Fest at the Ceramonte Center. And it was a huge success, I think, on my part, with our many vendors, artists, authors. We had musicians on hand and with the support of our sponsors, as well as our Art and Lit Fest committee members, we were able to create this event to provide a platform for our local community of artists, allowing them to showcase their talent. And we even actually had a vendor at the event that was so excited to be there and asked if we could do this quarterly. And I said to her, you give me the manpower and the funding and we can talk. But until then, no. But we do plan to host this annually, so if you were not there, if anyone's listening right now and you want to participate, look forward to having this event next year. We haven't set a specific date, but we are talking about definitely doing it a little bit earlier in the year versus later in the fall, just because there are so many things going on in the fall with elections going on. In this case, it was elections going on. And D C P L A, we have our retreat that we do, so we've got lots of things, a lot of moving parts in the fall. So hopefully we can do it more of the latter part of the summer before the school starts up so that we can get more kids involved with their art, with their artistry. So we're hoping that can happen. So again, please be on the lookout, especially to our audience. If again, if you weren't able to attend, it was a great success. And again, it's just a a way to get our community involved in our, in showcasing their artistry. We have so many artists here, we are just not tapping into them. And they go elsewhere to show their work, and we want to do it right here in their own backyard. So we hope we can continue that. Um, next on our events will be the Daily City Youth Poet Laureate for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. And it's going to pop up. Thank you, Shela, the flyer. So we are calling all poets, spoken word artists, writers, rappers to join a chance to represent Daily City. This program is a great opportunity for our youth to showcase not only their creative writing skills, but also exhibit a commitment to artist artistic excellence, civic engagement, leadership, and social justice. And did I mention that there's an honorary of five thousand dollars? So we encourage our Daily City youth to participate. You can apply online at dcpala.org backslash youth poet laureate. And the deadline to submit an application is January thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. And last but not least, D C P L A will be awarding two grants this year to the Daily City Public Libraries. The first grant is given to us by the Town of Colma in the amount of five thousand two hundred dollars. This is to fund the Story Walks that we will be installing at the, at both Bay Shore and Ceramonte Libraries. The Story Walks are frames along a path which holds pages of a picture book, so walkers can enjoy a stroll and a story all at the same time. To promote Park Pass program and to promote an appreciation for nature and active lifestyles, the libraries plan to use picture books that focus on these themes and hold events such as Ranger-led storytimes. Story Walks are now seen basically nationwide, and we even have them in San Francisco. The Park Pass program offered a grant opportunity of up to five thousand dollars, and the library applied and was awarded. But in order to build the proposed Story Walks at both Bay Shore and Ceramonte branches, the library asked for additional funding from D C P L A. We would like to give a shout out to the Daily City Public Works and Recreation Division for being critical partners in this program because of the additional time for planning and installation on their parts. The second grant is from Danford Fisher Hanning Foundation. So this foundation invests in various charities that support local health, education, and welfare. They have given us three thousand five hundred dollars to support library document station stations for the Ceramonte and John Daly libraries. These stations offer library visitors user-friendly, do-it-all stations to scan books and documents, convert to PDF, and send to phone, email, printer, fax. And as you know, many patrons rely on local libraries to conduct personal business, including applying for jobs, seeking housing, and completing various certifications. So we are very grateful for the funds received. However, we still need additional funding to complete the project. We were hoping to receive thirteen thousand seven hundred dollars to be able to complete the stations. So if anyone is listening out there, we are accepting any donations to dcpala.org to help complete the long overdue overdue requests addition, sorry, requested addition to our libraries. This is, this will be great to support to our patrons who not, don't have the necessary tools to be able to be successful in their homes. So this is a great way for them to can reach out to the libraries and be able to use those services. The Westlake Bay Shore Libraries already have funding for these stations, so.
There's funding available.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Um, a reminder, if you want to help support our local libraries and be part of the Daily City Public Library Associates, please go to our website, dcpala.org. And as the end of the year approaches, I would like to say that this will be my last month as president of D C P L A, but will continue as vice president for twenty twenty-three. Our incoming president will be Monica DiVincenzi from Republic Services. And we are excited to have her. I know she'll be a great leader for us. It has been a successful year, and we are excited for what's in store next year, and we will continue to do our best to help support our libraries. And that's all I have to share for this evening. Have any questions for me?
Major props for the Art and Lit Fest. I got to attend and I had so much fun. I did my Christmas shopping early. So early that I miss people getting called on stage.
Yeah. Actually, you're not the only one. Mayor was like, I don't, I think he was out on one of the.
We actually passed each other. He was like talking to someone, a vendor, and I was talking to another vendor, trying to get Sarah like a business card. I was like, oh. But it was so much fun. I'm excited to hear that you all are doing, thinking of reading again.
Yes, no, we definitely have to do something like this.
Yeah, I am one, like, I think in terms of the timing of the summer, it would be really beautiful to see some celebration of the new youth poet laureate.
Yes, yes, most definitely, yeah.
Just want to give you all props for that event.
Thank you so much, and thanks for coming out and supporting. It was, it was a very successful event.
Yeah, I remember walking through and I was like, that's a lot of vendors. And then I was like, there's another row of vendors. So I even wasn't expecting so many, so many people to be there.
Yeah, no, it was a good day. I I have to, I have to give props to the weather. I think the weather brought a lot of people in too. That rain helped people come in because, you know, when it's raining, they don't want to be stuck in the house, so they'd rather go to a mall. So it's perfect timing. So, yeah, yeah.
Thank you so much. I was there for like I said, an hour or less than an hour. I had another event going on at ceremony de la rey.
Oh, okay.
And some of my students were performing there, so I was going back and forth, but I saw Sarah over there again with her son. That she was able to pull and help her, yeah. And I saw some of those. Gosh, you know, I didn't bring a pocketful of money that day to shop, but it was a well-prepared and the crowd was slowly, you know, some people don't get up until eleven or, you know, twelve, but even the Mission Fusion, you know, they were performing very well too.
Yeah, we were excited to have them, yeah.
Yeah, and I was so amazed with Kalima's son, I hope to say your name, put your name, with the great gosh, like made out of cardboard. All those, it was amazing.
Right.
You know, and I wonder how we can actually have that in some of the libraries, you know, so we can promote his.
I think he would be totally excited. Yeah, he was just so thrilled to be there.
He was.
Yeah.
Oh, he was marvelous. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
Any other questions? No? Thank you so much, you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so announcements and communications. Any announcements? No, just these were given by Chela so we can help pass it out and promote, promote, promote.
I just wanted to remind everyone, I'm sure it's on your calendar if you can attend, that this Friday is the trivia challenge.
Yes.
So that's the twenty-ninth annual trivia challenge for Project Read of North San Mateo County. I know I'll be there and I know D C P L A has a team.
I'm looking to watch.
It sounds very, very competitive. So, yeah, it's it's their their big annual fundraiser and it's always amazing and it's nice that they, you know, were able to regain their momentum with coming out of the pandemic. So just wanted to mention that. And then also the Parks passes, you'll recall, we were trying to figure out how to allocate those fairly well. They're going to send us sixty-five more of them. So we're going to go from like, oh, sorry, we don't have one, to take, take them. So I'm very excited about that, that the state library worked with the state parks and just made this happen. And they they took, you know, the feedback that they got from libraries where, you know, patrons, they don't mind waiting a little bit, but when you're number one hundred and thirty on the waiting list, it doesn't seem as as helpful as maybe it was promised to be. So they they took that to heart and they they have issued just a lot of additional passes. And I know that we've, they're trying to distribute them in a way that that really promotes equity, and so we we got a lot of them. So they will be coming in towards the end of this month, so they should be available. Well, certainly when the weather turns nice. So we're excited about that.
Thank you. Um, thank you for always. Bay Shore, they had a block party la, to October. And library staff too were there passing out some books and materials for the children. It was a good turnout. The weather was beautiful. A lot, a lot familiar, even alumnis show up to support and it was a lot of good food from the food trucks and and whatnot performances. So, yeah, so thank you for always coming through and representing libraries. Anybody else? Nope. Okay. Number nine, correspondence from parent to patron. So I received an email. Chela, would you like to take lead on this one?
Is this about the email from the patron?
Yes, from the patron.
So there's a an email box for for the board. And so if, it's typically just spam and viruses, but occasionally we do, we do get a something from a patron, so I I pass it along immediately, of course. And then Dr. Lex asked that this be added to the agenda to be discussed. I did, as I mentioned to you when I forwarded, I did reach back out to this particular patron. She's, I think, it sounds like a regular parent that comes to the Ceramonte Library. And I just, I wanted to to get a little additional information from her because we we always appreciate the feedback and she's clearly advocating, you know, she's she's seeing what they have in other communities and wanting to have that for for our beautiful community as well. So I I just asked her a little bit more about what she was looking for and whether she didn't find it or if it was already checked out, that sort of thing. I I haven't yet heard back from her. But it did, it, when I read it, the thing that's that really kind of popped out at me, she had mentioned the the collections and particularly award-winning books and books on STEM for for young people. And I can tell you, we, you know, we have librarians that do the collection development. And Sarah actually maintains the list of all the award-winning titles on our catalog so that it's easily found by patrons. And so we were pretty diligent about that. And so if she was not finding it, it's possible something slipped through and we just didn't have what she was looking for, but also it's possible we're not, we can do better at at making things, highlighting collections, making things available, making things easier to find. So I kind of wanted to to get that feedback from her. And then, and she, you know, I think she also. Um, and then, and she, you know, I think she also probably saw, and a lot of people always do, that the county is, has launched a really ambitious, beautiful after-school program. But, you know, all these things, um, come down to staffing resources. The county has, has more than, than, than Sarah. Um, but we definitely would want to know when we get this feedback, like when we, the programs that we do, we wanna know that we're doing the things that, that people are most interested in, in attending. So it's always good to get that feedback. Um, so I'll definitely let you know if, if she does get back to me, but otherwise, um, I just want, you know, I put this on because I, I know that there was an interest in discussing.
I was hoping that, that, uh, there would be some interaction, uh, because Shayla said she was gonna follow up and that she would be able to share that interaction with us. So, you know, it's unfortunate that the communication didn't.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's the sad part, but I appreciate these kind of emails, I really do, because it helps me to look at my part of sitting in this, this seat. Am I doing my job? And that reflects to the staff. So when reading through the email, I highlight some, it sounded like she has, um, youth children. And it sounded like a well advocate mother for her children, which is, and it sounded like that she's really into books and a bookworm and literacy and for the future of her children. What it said in me is that, um, that yes, we didn't have that chance to communicate back to, with her. But it kinda opened up a light as a light bulb to me that we need to do better in what, and you own it. Thank you, Jayla, you own it, that you felt like you were short in that part. So that moving forward, that we're, we're going to look deeply into some of the concerns that she highlighted. And I've been looking at some of the, um, on the websites, some of the libraries I was just mentioning to Christine. And there's, there's quite that they're doing at other libraries, they're not here in Daily Cities. And then I'm like, is it budget-wise? So it all comes down to budget-wise.
It does. I, I think that, you know, we're part of an amazing system of libraries, the peninsula, there's some just really, um, you know, phenomenal libraries here. But I, I do our statistics, you know, with the state. And so we're, you know, there's, there's such a variation in, in the, the level of service that libraries at different parts of the state are able to offer. It's just one of those inequities, um, that's kind of seems to be baked in in California. So I think we tend to get compared to, you know, to our neighbors that have, you know, a lot more staffing resources, which really is fundamentally, you know, what, what, what makes things possible. So I, I, as I said, I, I, I mean, I think we, we do have a lot of great materials and, and so that's, I'll definitely be, be talking with staff about highlighting.
I guess like something I'm also, I also kind of took from that first email was that it seemed like the patron might be looking for, um, some particular materials for youth older than toddler age. I mean, I guess I'm just curious, cause I know sometimes we have more concentration of some particular materials at different branches, but the ceremony, I feel like ceremony is pretty like has everything.
Well, the, the librarians definitely, um, for, when they're collecting in the children's area, it's, you know, it's very different from collecting in the adult area because you're, it's, it's, it's just this multitude of collections, really. You, you need a book on, you know, Barbados or whatever, but then you, you know, you need one that's for a, a very young child and then something that might be for a middle schooler. Um, if she, if she's visiting maybe one of the libraries that uses like a find-it system, they might have all their STEM books, for example, in, under STEM. Um, whereas we, we're using the Dewey system as most libraries do, and so they might, those STEM topics might be scattered under specific, you know, numbers for the particular subtopic that they are. Um, so you know, the engineering might be in a different place from, you know, astronomy, of course. So that's, that's a factor. So maybe, you know, something in the way of like displays or, or I know the book lists that, that Sarah does, really good book lists. Um, something like that might help her find them, cause we do, we do get a lot of, of really great books. I, I, it's an absolute joy to, to, I'm surrounded by all the books that come in, cause the, I'm near the loading dock. So all the books come out of the boxes and, and we, so we do get a lot of wonderful materials. So we wanna make sure people find them and enjoy them.
Yeah, the other thing that I, when I spoke with Jayla that day is to maybe have the, you know, the other thing that she mentioned in her email was the after-school programs and for youth. And I know that Parks and Rec do a wonderful job, maybe she's not aware of that. Those resources has to be vessel through her to let her know what those goes on. But, um, that brings us to agenda building for next meeting. Is, um, I wanna put there before somebody else, um, you, all of you guys have your turn, is that we need to look into ideas for teens programs, you know, for libraries. I know that we're really good from zero to, to five. Then, you know, we focus on one and then we forget the other, the other, the other part, which is Sarah, Sarah, you can't do it all. I know you do your best.
You have to bribe teens.
I just, oh, I just wanted to mention that I do go to the high schools. Um, that's a way for me to connect with them. Um, because we just don't tend to get very many at the library. Um, and I think that's a challenge for a lot of libraries is trying to figure out what to do to get the teens in. So I've been, um, working with specifically Westmore, the librarian there, and I've been going maybe once a month or so, it just depends, but, um, we did a great library signup, um, event for September. Um, they got into a raffle for movie tickets if they signed up for a library card and they could sign up because they're teens. They don't need parent signatures, so, um, I just, I try to go and do, you know, just hang out during lunch in the library and talk to the kids and so, I mean, that, it comes down to what will bring them into the library. And that's really hard, so, um, this is what I can do right now, is I can go to them and still like talk about the library and permit the library. So I just wanted to let you know that I am, I am trying.
Yes, I, I, I know.
No, no, that's just, it's just a way, like, that's what's working right now.
Yeah, and then maybe more tweens than teens, but, uh, you, you had mentioned recreation and that partnership that's over at Bay Shore. And so, you know, Christine has a lot of middle schoolers that she's able to provide, you know, programming for, be, because they have to go there. Because they're part of, part of this, this kind of package program, so the, um, it really brings in a, an audience there. But yeah, when you're doing like a general attendance thing, that's always a special challenge.
So we could put that on and then I'll steal the board vacancy. Do we need to follow back on the subcommittee that report for the B project? Or do we need to give it a, until the following?
I think we should have it on the agenda, you know, until. Is established, uh, just to keep me on my toes if nothing else.
Is it January? Cause we have a blackout in December, do we?
We, we, we've historically, traditionally, we, we do not meet in, in December, yeah.
Oh, perfect. So in January, okay.
The other subcommittee also.
Okay, and then the subcommittee for the meeting room policy? Okay, and then the library events, visits. Does anybody else have anything else to put on?
I think it might be time to do reorganization.
Uh, and reorg, yes. Thank you for that. Okay, um, oh. Who's doing the marketing for the, for the libraries? Like the branding of it?
There's a, a, a team. Um, so Sarah and myself and, and some of the other, other, um, libraries have regular meetings and, and so we, you know, it's Christine is the chair and we, we go through, you know, communicating things via the website or via the newsletter or via the, um, you know, flyers, things like that. Are you think, thinking about something in particular?
I, no, maybe later on or offline, we can, we can talk. And that's it. I thank you, everyone. Whether you're on via Zoom or you're here in person, I, we're greatly appreciated for your participation and your time putting in. To all the librarians, to all the staff, we thank you. And D C P L A, we're forever grateful for your participation in any, any way to help the libraries. Thank you, everyone. And happy holidays if I don't see you. Have a great one and be safe. Okay, and meeting adjourned at seven forty.